Call our Special City Council Workshop of March 5th to order. The second item we have on the agenda is the proposed discussion of the proposed multi-sports complex plan. Leroy, you're going to lead that charge?
I guess I am. I offered it to Chris since he's chairman of the task force and he said, "Yeah."
I'm sure he'll chime in.
Sorry for interrupting. The first slide on the PowerPoint just goes back to May of 2017 when the city council appointed the task force to look at this item. Talks about some of the items that they want the task force to look at. And then on the right-hand side is the membership. Of course, some of those players have changed since 2017, but we tried to keep the representative from the same sports groups on it throughout. This is the concept plan. We own roughly eight acres out at College and Midwest Boulevard. Water tower right here as you see off of 33. Twelve-acre industrial site and 68 acres for the facility, sports facility.
Well, actually, you can see it.
690 parking spaces. We decided soccer to be improved at their current location. This year, we worked with the soccer club and put irrigation in on their fields using city crews. So our plans are right now, instead of moving down to a new facility, work with them to improve where they're at. But you'll have softball, baseball, and then, of course, little league or younger ages. The cost to do the entire sports complex, I have a detailed cost estimate from ours that I can print out and give you, but construction 11.3 and contingency 2.8, $14 million. There is some value engineering that we could do to bring that cost down some, but roughly that tells you what if you're going to do this little complex, you're going to be in that ballpark. Just to highlight the 12-acre industrial site, how that ties into the sports complex to some degree. If we were to get the industry that employs roughly 30 people, we would be eligible to get a CDBG infrastructure grant. And the sewer line that we would put in goes through the sports complex and would serve it. That would take about, getting water and sewer through that would take about $1 million off of the sports complex budget if we were fortunate enough to get someone to land on that site. Well, of course, $14 million is a big undertaking, so is the task force talked about dividing it into phases. Coloring, if you look at this, the softball complex was determined by the task force that would be the one to do first. And then Phase 2 would be the little league fields in that parking lot. And then Phase 3 would be the bigger baseball fields in this parking lot. So divided into phases. If you look at Phase 1, because there are some site improvements, it's, you don't take the 14 and divide it by 3 because you've got to do some of the site work. You've got to extend the utilities, which is roughly $1 million. See, $800,000 and $8,000,000. But to do Phase 1, do all these fields and the improvements, concession stands, and the first parking lot is right at $6.6 million. Again, there can be some value engineering that could, you know, reduce that number to some degree. Thought we'd highlight a little bit about what is sports tourism. And it's kind of hard to do the economic impact study on something you haven't built yet, but to give some idea, and we can do one, but I didn't have time to prepare one for tonight. But sports tourism is, of course, an activity where people visit a particular location as a sports event participant, spectator, or travel to experience a recreation-based venue. Just on this one, an individual talked about all of their expenses when they go to a sporting event. And for a family of three, wife, husband, and child, they estimate they spend about $800 for each sporting event they go to. The other one is the county, and the reason I put that in there, this show, their events and attendance continues to grow. And so it's not a declining industry, sports tourism. Just some, these are specific to our project, but in one report, I looked at explosive youth sports tourism movement. Says it's a $15.3 billion industry in 2017 and 55% growth since 2010. Youth sports tourism is a fastest-growing segment in travel, 45-plus million. Visitors spend $250 a day each average. So earlier, where the gentleman said something about $800, well, if you take it times 3, that's, you're at 750, so that's pretty consistent. On the other side, talks about explosive sort of sports, same kind of numbers. And just to give you some idea, that sports complex provides indirect benefit to the community because people come, they buy gas, they buy food, they go to Walmart to buy supplies and snacks, they spend the night in a motel. So that indirect benefit creates economic activity in the community. This is just another, some more information on some tournaments. In this one park, they had four tournaments. They projected it generated about $2.5 billion of direct income and produced 5,500 hotel rooms. Again, this is not specific to our project, but just to kind of give you an idea that sports tourism or sports brings a lot of people to town. So the littler kids' sports, you know, normally, do you not only have mom and dad, a lot of times, you have granddad, grandma come with them as well. And we have several people in the room that have had more recent experience taking their children around and following them to sports events that might be able to give better testimony. I've not had to do that for over 20 years, so it's changed. The task force discussed possible ways to fund the multi-sports complex. They talked about potential use of the hotel motel tax. In a minute, I'll show you what the hotel motel tax rate is in other communities, projected revenue if we increase the motel tax rate, and then the election schedule if we were going to look at an election to increase the motel tax. They also talked about a land and water conservation fund grant process, and we got a 50/50 land and water conservation grant for Mineral Wells Park this year. That will be due, and there's some more chairs in my office if you want to grab one out. You'll have to go around this way, Jim. You can open that door.
Jim, there's one on your end.
Those will be due in July of this year, and we would be eligible, we could have two grants at the same time. Let me check on that. And so if you have $2 million local dollars, you get $2 million their dollars, and you can do a $4 million project roughly. So you doubled the amount of money that you have for the project. City 3/4% capital improvement sales tax was discussed, and of course, there's already a lot of competing things for that money. And then the other was to pass an additional five-year special project sales tax of some level, either an eighth of cent, quarter of cent, or half cent for a five- or 10-year period on top of what we have now. And we'll show how we compare the other communities with our existing sales tax rate. Talked about a geo-bond issue or property tax. Of course, then you get started competing with school districts on trying to fund school improvements, going to foundations such as the Innis Much foundations or other Oklahoma foundations, and then other potential funding, we really didn't come up with any others. One thing that I wanted to highlight, because when you talk about our existing 3/4 CIP tax, then I'm not sure where they locked up the government list of what we were supposed to do with that, bank $2 million of revenue. But there's a lot of different lists on how we were supposed to spend that money. But I go back to the base document. Back in 2016, there was a citizen survey, and you can see how they were rated. Street improvements was the number-one priority, business recruitment was number-two, and youth activities was number-three. The sports complex was number-19 on that list as far as ranking by the citizens that responded to the survey. There's no details when this survey was sent out, so anybody's interpretation, when you say youth activities, what does that mean? And then you ask three people, you might have three different ideas. I did find it interesting when I looked at this, if you look at youth activities ranked third, then you look at some specific youth activities like park improvements ranked number-nine, community centers number-14, city pool 15, sports complex 19, and splash pad 21. Well, some of those, I think of when you say youth activities are youth activities, so it's kind of confusing. Then there's additional confusion, and I'm not blaming the newspaper at all, but there was an article in January 2016 that said, you know, it's $19 million over a 15-year period, and that's a profit that, street improvements, wastewater treatment plant, youth and senior activities, ladder truck for the country fire department, Highland Park pool improvements, and adding a splash pad, and then fleet upgrades for the police department and public works. Well, yep, I guess as Paul Harvey used to say, the rest of the story. When you look at the detailed spreadsheet that was done by the former city manager, when you look at, like here, the wastewater treatment plant, well, there was $4 million of the $19 million sales tax that was designated to go towards the wastewater treatment plant. Well, if you read the fine print, of course, it says estimated $10 million, more is going to come from somewhere else. And as we went through workshop earlier, it was clear that unless we wanted to borrow and pay interest only for a number of years, it makes sense for us to wait until the water plant bond issues retard, and then we do have the ability to come up with the balance of the $10 million. But when you just read it in the newspaper, it looks like the sales tax issue was going to pay for the wastewater treatment. Well, it only paid for a $4 million of a $14 million project. The same way with the youth sports activities, you can see out of the $19 million, 2.3 million was set aside. Well, that's not going to build a $14 million sports complex. And even on top of that, that 2.3 was for multiple things. It was for improvements to Highland Hall, sports complex, partnership with the library, YMCA, and local schools. The math don't work when you start saying, well, you're going to do all these big projects, $14 million sewer project, $14 million sports complex. But when you read it in the newspaper, I can see where people would be, think, well, we voted for that already. But clearly, they didn't vote for enough money to do all those things. The task force voted a couple of months ago for Phase 1 funding to increase the motel tax rate from 4% to 8%, and pursue maybe limited funding from the city 3/4% capital improvement program tax, apply for a land and water conservation grant that's a 50% match, and then pursue money from foundations, and maybe pursue some participation from Langston University. And we've had a meeting with Langston University, the president and their athletic director. I don't know where that's going to lead yet, but they were very receptive and excited about our project. So it may lead to some participation as well. On operation and maintenance, where they looked at creating an all-sports authority, similar to Edmonds, all-sports authority. We already have agreements with individual sports, baseball, softball, soccer, where they maintain the fields, they do the day-to-day type maintenance, they pay for all the programming. This would just put them all under, won't change the nature of those agreements, but put it all under one sports authority to do those things rather than have individual. To give you an idea on the motel tax rate, if you look at this, on this side, Chickshay, Enid, Muskogee, Perry, Ponca City, they already have an 8% motel tax. And Perry, they dedicated the entire 8% to their sports complex. Ardmore and Sand Springs, 7%, Woodward, 6%, and several of them in the 5% range. And then you see Reno's 4.5, Guthrie's at 4%. Just for comparative purposes, Oklahoma City's 5.5, Tulsa 5, and Edmonds 4%. So it kind of shows where we're at compared to other communities. Looking at the revenue that's been generated by our current 4% motel tax, in 2016, it generated just under $190,000. In '17, that went to 202, and in '18, it was $236,000, just a little bit over that. It has, just like our sales tax, it's taken a backward steps a little bit to start this year, but we're still tracking pretty good. If you look at last year's revenue, at 4%, it generated $236,000. Of course, none of that went to the sports complex. 5% off the top goes to administrative fee, it goes to city, and then after the 5% is taken off the top, 2/3 or 66% goes to tourism, the CBD, and 33% to parks. So if we were to add 5% in the additional increase, 100% towards the sports complex and leave the other distribution alone, an additional percent would generate about $56,000 a year, 6%, roughly $112,000, 7%, $168,000. And the 8% that was originally recommended would generate $224,000 towards the sports complex. And you can see over here, over a 10-year period, at 8%, it would generate 2.2 million. At 15-year period, it would generate 3.3 million. We looked at what that would do if you borrowed a 15-year bond at 3.65% with issuance cost. It would net you about 2.5 million for the project. That would be the capital you could borrow, and then your interest would be about $780,000, and then your issuance cost would be, sorry. And then, in order to borrow that full amount, we would pledge the third percent that goes to parks right now as a credit enhancement because if, for some reason, our motel tax didn't generate what we thought, then the $74,000 right now that's going towards parks would make up the difference out of that cash flow. Election dates, that would be important to look at. If you have the resolution turned in by March 14th, you could have the election on May 14th. If you turn it in by April 11th, you could have a special election on June 11th. And May 9th, you could have the election on July 9th. So we have some time. The first meeting in April, if you adopt it, we could turn it in on April 11th. If you did it the first meeting in May, then we could turn it in before May 9th and have the election on July 9th. Those three sets of dates are important because the land and water conservation application deadline is July 31st, and if we're going to apply for that, we'll need to show where our matching money's going to come from. But clearly, there's some time to analyze this and make a decision. You don't have to make a decision tonight. We have looked at some alternate funding plans as well, potential use of special sales tax issue. And what I've tried to do here is, this at 3.75%, which is our current tax rate, generated about $6.8 million last budget year. So if you look at an eighth of percent sales tax, it would generate $225,000 annually. If you did a quarter cent, $451,000. And then I show what those generate, and if you did a half percent, what it would generate over a five-year period and a 10-year period. And then I did the same thing for the motel tax at 5%, 6%, 7, and 8. Option 1, still trying to get it to roughly $3.8 billion. If you did a combination of a 10-year eighth-cent sales tax increase and had an election to approve that, it would generate $2,259,000. And then if you did 10 years of increased motel tax at 6%, it'd be $1,122,000. And that would, over a 10-year period, would give you roughly $3.4 million. Option 2, if you looked at a five-year special sales tax at a quarter of percent, it would generate $2.3 million roughly. And then the 10 years of motel tax, $1,122,000, and that gets you to $3.3 million. Option 3, if you did a 10-year special quarter-of-percent sales tax for 10 years instead of five is, in option 2, would generate $4.5 million. And then the 10-year motel tax, again, would generate $1,102,000. That projected revenue would be 5.6. So under that scenario, if you applied for the land and water conservation fund grant and didn't get it, you would still have a funding source to move forward with Phase 1. If you got the land and water conservation fund, then you could do a bigger Phase 1 project. The other thing, if you did one of these scenarios and left the motel tax, whether it's a 1% increase to 5 or 2 to 6, it would generate, if you let that on permanently, it would generate $56,000 annually once you did the bond issue to go towards major improvements in the future or maintenance and operations. If you did 6%, you'd have $112,000 that would be available each year if you had to do major maintenance, those kinds of things. Just to look at other sales tax in the metro area, this side, what I've done is total taxes highest to lowest. Piedmont, when you take city, state, and county tax for Piedmont, they're at 9.85%. And you can see where Spencer and Nacoma Park and Ada and Perry and Midwest City are all, total are higher than us. Guthrie is at 9% right now with our 3.75% city tax, 4.5% state, and 3/4% county sales tax. And then you can see that other communities, especially if they don't have a county tax, are lower than us total tax-wise. On the right-hand side shows the city tax highest to lowest, just looking at the city tax. So Piedmont's at 5%, Spencer's at 5. So you've got a lot of communities that are higher than us as far as just the local city sales tax when you don't look at the state and the county, and we're down at 3.75%. To kind of give you some perspective of where we're at in comparison to other communities and their sales tax burden. That's really my presentation, and as I said, Chris was the chairman of the task force, and of course, with his kids, he's pretty connected to the sports world. Kenny's daughter just got through going through all these sports things. I think he would be a position to answer questions. Bill Mars is here as our engineer on the design of the project. I think the big question is, you know, one, should we believe that a $14 million or in that range sports complex is something that we will look at that is going to be an asset to our community? I think, one, you have to look at the sports tourism and what it would do as far as bringing people to our community. I think there is also some indirect benefit. We've talked about investment in our community of the nature that's going to bring young families and young entrepreneurs to our community. So if you look at some of the basics, how do people decide where they're going to live? Of course, probably schools, and supporting the school and their improvements to continue to improve and make our school system attractive, healthcare. But then you get past those, and then you get into city-related things, the things we're doing with park improvements and bikeability, walkability, trying to have a vibrant downtown, trying to recruit things like group hubs and sporting facilities like this, make you more attractive to that age group, the millennials, and that's how they're going to decide where they want to live. Well, that's where business and industry want to be as well, is communities where they see growth in the young population because that's their future workforce. So it all kind of ties in together of making your community attractive to that age group of young professionals, young entrepreneurs that you're trying to develop in your community. That's more of an indirect benefit, but clearly something that we should take into consideration. So, one, do we see this project as an asset? Number two, how do we break it up in phases? Number three, how do you finance those phases?
Again, Phase 1 cost was what? Target was 6?
6.
Was it 6?
Yes.
So it would be, optimistically, if we were getting the 50/50 grant, we're looking at some target of bringing $5 million, or $3 million to the table.
Correct. Well, you'd have 2.5 if you did the go from 4 to 8% on motel tax or use one of the other scenarios. If you have roughly 3.5 to 3.8, you do a bond issue, you would get 2.5 million. You could batch that with land and water conservation. So you could do roughly a $5 billion project unless you tap the CIP money for some additional funds. If we were to get an industry and get the million-dollar sewer extension paid for, then that $6 million goes down to a $5 million Phase 1 project. So a lot of variables in there.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that, I think the project itself is a significant project for our community, and clearly for our youth, but also for, I think it gives a message. I just happened to be driving back from a little trip last night, and I think it was at Paul's Valley that I drove by on I-35. at Paul's Valley that I drove by on I-35. And they've got a sports complex that's right there on the interstate. And lights run. And there's just something about when you see that, you see some activity going on and lights on, and there's just something about the message that it gives about, hey, that place is moving. It's, they've got things going. There's just a message that it gives. And I think, I think the first thing is, I think it's something that's great for our youth. I think it lay, it gives a platform for bringing in some significant economic revenue with tournaments. And as you've identified, I think it creates kind of a cultural thing of, for businesses, looking at Guthrie to move here. I think it's a, I think it's just really, really positive all the way around. It all boils down to, it's all about the money. And how do we, how do we make it happen? And I think in our, in our, in our past, we've come to that, that crossroads a few other times of, you know, good ideas and then...
We've got a lot of ten to fourteen million dollar projects need to be funded.
How are we gonna fund it?
You know, I can name another one.
So I, I think this is a significant priority for our community. I think it adds positive things to our community in a number of ways. I think, I think we need to be moving forward with it.
A second, I think that as well. I think it's a great thing. But what I would like to, I would like to hear a little bit from the hotel motel people that are here today. I think we've got some bed and breakfast people and some hotel motel type stuff because there's a point in time where we can tax ourselves out of everything.
And, and before they start, I will let you know that the alternatives that I added at the end was a result of the task force meeting last night and receiving input from the hotels and some of the bed and breakfast owners to not put a hundred percent of the burden on the motels and go from four to eight, but maybe be more palatable if we went to five or six percent motel tax and then got some from a sales tax increase. So that's where that proposal comes from. So we have tried to be responsive to some of their input, but, but clearly, they need to speak.
I would also like to put in there too, also with the equitable split of how the motel, hotel motel tax is split with the five percent off the top and the one-third, two-third, how, if that would be rearranged, if there's any way to move that around where more goes to say...
Sports complex.
Yeah, instead of advertisement. I mean, and if that is, I mean, not saying we need to, we need all the advertisement we can get, but then to maybe do a different type of split from one-third, two-thirds.
Not without a vote of the people, you can't.
Well, that's the whole thing. We'd have to...
Any of this has to have a vote.
Everything would have to go to a vote, but I mean, there's a different, different way to, to split the monies other than the way it is right now.
One question I would have, if you did a vote to split the different, split it differently and then maybe add it to five percent, if you lose that election, do you lose the whole shebang or are you putting it all...
Does it just go back to the way it is today?
Correct. That would be a question I would have. I guess if you do the election and change it and fail, do you go back to where we are or do you go back?
I think the same one stays in effect unless it's repealed or overridden by...
Yeah, because the election would just, a negative election would just not allow it to act.
Just not allow it to change. It would stay the same. But imagine you would, however many votes or however many different ballots for different, to change things. If we were going to change the equitable split, it would just be that. Obviously, if it failed, it would stay the same. Or if we were to do something to begin, or however it would go, I'm not quite sure what we...
Or if you want to change the equitable split and you're gonna do an increase at the same time, then I'd say do the vote for the increase and then say...
A separate ballot.
If, no, if it passes, then it, just like it is now, except instead of two-thirds, one-third, it's fifty-fifty or a third, a third, a third, if you want to do something else. I think you could do it all in one, one vote.
Any other, any other staff folks, any other questions?
Well, I think we wanted to hear, Brian indicated he wanted to hear from someone about hotels.
Got a representative from Bed and Breakfast? Gary? Your seat, got about five minutes.
I might need a half a minute.
No, you don't.
Come on, Steve.
No, you don't.
You're my idol.
Well, the first thing, we had a meeting about, we had our regular meeting and we did discuss this. The first thing that the owners of the B and Bs wanted to say to you guys was, thanks for working on something that's gonna be good for the city. In no way would we throw any negatives towards a project like this because sports complex, bringing people to town is really what it's all about. And so we're all for that. Our main dilemma and problem with it is, is the funding and how that would happen. Basically, we're at four percent now, so with our sales tax of nine percent, we're charging thirteen percent to anybody that stays at our place. Our closest competitors as far as B and Bs hotels is Edmund at four percent, Stillwater at four percent. We're right in between. We jack ours up to eight percent and all of a sudden, we're at a disadvantage. Last year, we had collectively our worst year for B and Bs as far as nights, room nights. And what we're afraid of is that if it gets worse, that instead of remaining bed and breakfast, a lot of them will just start renting as apartments. And out of the eight B and Bs we have, most of those could do that, not all of them, but most of those could do that. And if they do that, then there's no tax revenue for the city at all. And there's no sales tax either as far as hotel or sales. So that would be a negative, but probably more than, more than that, it would be the sweetness of this town. We are the unofficial bed and breakfast capital of Oklahoma, somewhat self-designated, but that's okay. And that's part of the charm of the historic town. I mean, people talk about that and we're trying really hard to keep that up. And we're just really afraid that if we jump our sales tax up that high, we're gonna be at a real disadvantage. I was on the very first M.A.T.S. project in Oklahoma City, and I mentioned this to some of you. And I was on the committee and, and basically, M.A.T.S. presented to the city of Oklahoma City. And like you guys have presented, and I haven't seen all of it, but I've heard the basic layout of the sports complex, presented that to Oklahoma City and then put it up to a vote of the people. And they did that by, by raising the sales tax. Everybody was involved. Everybody paid tax and they bought it, they bought into it. And they had an oversight committee that, that was put in place to make sure that what they said they were gonna get, they got. And they did. They did so well that they did M.A.T.S. two, et cetera, et cetera. My thought is, if Guthrie wants a sports complex, stand up, put it to a vote of the people to either pump up the sales tax a fourth percent or an eighth percent. If we need to raise the hotel tax to five percent, I'd prefer it not go over five percent on my side, but if that needs to happen so we can all join in, a little bit of sales tax, a little bit of hotel tax, water, whatever else we can get matching, then fine. But we all need to stand up together, in my opinion, and say, we want this and let's vote on it.
Gary, may I ask you a question? I'm honestly trying to learn. I do travel quite a bit and I have never, ever, ever stayed someplace or refused to stay someplace because of a tax charge. Am I just nuts?
No, a lot of individuals are...
I never ask. I just, I stay in the city I want to stay in and I don't ask.
Well, it's mostly groups and it's, it's like when you're booking an event and if you have an event coordinator, that's, that's where that comes in. They look at the total cost. And they ask me, what, what's the cost for the rooms and what's the tax, what's the total? So, no, not everybody asks.
I can probably answer your question a little better once Gary finishes.
Oh, that's fine. I just, I'm trying to learn because I don't ask.
You've got a minute already.
You know. I really don't need my other minute. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate all the efforts gone in on this and I, I think it's a neat idea. I just hope you can figure out how to fund it without killing the B and Bs. Thank you.
So there are, in total, there are approximately a dozen B and Bs?
Eight.
You got eight in your association and then there are about...
Probably four others.
Four or five others?
And everybody that I spoke with that's not in the association said, we want to stand with you. We don't really want that because we feel like it would hurt us. And including the Pollard that's here tonight, including Dominion House, including Tipsy Artist, everybody that has the B and Bs have said, please don't do that to us.
And the Dominion just opened their deal. But what is, what about the, how many nights are, how much revenue are we looking at currently? Do you know? Does anybody do that? On the, on the B and Bs, I'm not talking about the hotel motel. Is that broken out?
I don't have that broken out. I don't know.
I don't have that.
Okay. Fair enough.
Good, thanks.
I can get it.
Thanks, Gary.
Your opportunity.
You can break it out. We can break it out.
Yeah, we have a gantling five minutes.
Well, five minutes means ten if it's Gary. First of all, I appreciate giving me the time here. Couple of things I do have. We mentioned Perry has eight percent. A portion of that does go to the CBB. I did a little research, I did call Perry and the baseball complex they do have. I talked to them and they basically have about ten, eleven events, weekends for the whole year. They don't have anything in July and August and then like November, December, January, February. March would be their first one, the last week of March. And then I called all the motels up there, what kind of occupancy do you increase by when these events happen? I got one which said three and a half percent. And the other ones, the other, there's four motels, sorry. The other one said fifteen percent. And, and these hotels average like sixty-five, seventy rooms. So you can do the math and you know, it's not too many motel room nights for them. Talking about Guthrie, the last nine months has been decrease in lodging tax. The increase you do see from sixteen, seventeen to eighteen because we have added one hundred and fifty motel rooms.
Right.
So that's an increase. The business hasn't increased, it's just...
Spread out.
Spread out. So talking to the hotels, they are losing money, bottom line. I'm losing money and some of the other ones are. We have a very high breakeven overhead cost. The hotels all put together pay over two hundred thousand dollars in property tax. How much is this facility, this fourteen million property complex we're gonna, how much you think they'll, how much is the property tax on that? How much will the city get in property tax for the school system?
Well, the county gets the property tax.
The city, the county. Okay, so how much would it be? How much would it be?
The city doesn't pay property tax all the way.
None, zero.
Zero.
That's what you're looking for.
Yes. So the city, the city being the owners, you know, I'm looking at, and, and first of all, I should've said, every single motel owner I talked to said they are for this complex. I am for this complex. This is a great project.
Yeah.
But we gotta find some other kind of financing. And going back to your question now...
Yes, please.
Okay. Basically, my hotel is more of a work, construction, commercial motel. So a lot of my customers are on a per diem. So they'll come to me and say, here's fifty bucks, you eat the tax. I'm not giving you a penny more than fifty dollars. So what do I have to do?
You have to reduce your rate.
Because I've been...
So I'm paying out of my pocket the sales tax. And it's becoming more and more often.
Do you think that that, well, I wonder sometimes if, if that is, well, I'm not gonna say it, I'll tell you another time. I just wonder if that's totally above board.
Well, no, so what I do is fifty dollars, so I have to reduce my rent to forty...
Right.
To make it fifty.
It's above board.
Their proposal to you is what I'm saying.
Well, I need the customer.
I know, I know.
And that's all they're gonna get from their company, where they have to pay out of pocket and they don't want to pay out of pocket.
That's not right.
Well, that's...
Well, you don't want to pay out of pocket either.
Well, I have to get the customer.
They'll go down the road and stay somewhere else.
Yeah.
Do you think...
I mean, there's a risk and reward here.
Yes.
There's a risk and reward.
I'm for this project.
There's potential of more, of more...
Definitely, definitely.
People coming in with tournaments, there's a potential with a partnership with Langston with more tournaments there. And do you feel that risk and reward is worth it?
Right now, I don't. For the numbers we have right now, the last nine months, the lodging tax has decreased. So basically, our income, our rental but income has gone down the last nine months. Last year, I looked it up, January was a big one, but we already passed January right now and it was a decrease.
Gary laid it out there. It's gonna have to go on the shoulders of everyone, including everybody at this table, everybody in this town, that's who it's gonna have to go on the shoulders of. Can't just go on the shoulders of these guys. It's never gonna happen. You know, a couple million bucks isn't what we're looking for, only fourteen million.
Yeah, and I guess, if the project gets fourteen million, so how much interest and principal are we paying over ten years for this project? I guess my thinking is more of a business-minded thinking.
It's gonna be, I don't even see how it's gonna be funded.
It's a little different from everybody.
I haven't seen a good vehicle to fund this at this point, on this meeting here today.
So, you know, okay, four percent, so we're just looking at an additional two hundred thousand. That's for fourteen million dollar project, that's a...
I think that we're gonna have to do all four of the above. We're gonna have to do everything.
I think the elephant in the room, and I just had him put it back on the screen, is the county tax is three-quarters of a percent.
Yeah.
That was before this frickin' jail and the jail is paid for, why are we still paying that tax and that we can't actually take a hold of?
That's for our, our roads, bridges.
Well, it starts with the jail.
And jail, and paying for jail administration, the jail.
If you look on there, most of your counties are zero. And our county needs to stay in its lane, if I could say that, because our lane is sales tax, their lane is property tax. We're saying we're not gonna go to property tax because that's the county's lane. They need to get out of our lane.
Zero is all Oklahoma has. So how do we get that three-quarters out of the way?
I don't think we can.
Back in our lane.
And they get our pocket. They approved a sixteen-year deal.
Huh?
It was a ten-year deal.
Is that what it was?
Five years ago.
But I thought it was up until the ten-year or till it was paid, right?
Sunset.
Was it just the sunset?
But I, I think that the task force recognized, just as Brian, what you were saying, is that it needs to be, it needs to be spread, the base needs to be spread out more than just motel hotel.
Even then, even with four percent additional, it's not gonna make a dent.
That's why I was wondering on some of this six point six million on phase one, or whatever that number is, how much of that, what does that really look like? I saw a drawing. I, having been in your meetings, maybe I should've come to some of them. I didn't, and maybe I will in the future. But what does that look like? How much can we do? Because it's like, if I'm gonna build something on my property and I can't afford it, maybe I roll up my sleeves and I do some of the work in a big, big way.
We, we have not done value engineering at this point to look at what we can do in-house.
We probably should.
There's something that we could do. I mean, there are some things we can do. We have hard surface paving. We could start out with gravel parking and then come back later and do the hard surface paving. So there is some value engineering we can do, but what we're building would be classified as a quality facility.
Or maybe that's where we get the paving machine that we've talked about over years, but we didn't get it because of... Or maybe that's where we get the paving machine that we've talked about over years, but we didn't get it because we don't know how to run it or we don't have the people to run it, but maybe we use it in a project like that and then move it into circulation within the city after that. That's another whole thing. I understand. I'm just saying, it doesn't necessarily have to be gravel.
But, but I, I think that, I think part of the other concern in some of the discussions at the task force was trying to cut it down so low that you didn't get a quality product. And if you didn't get a quality product, then people don't come. And, and there were multiple around the table, there are multiple examples of, of teams not going to certain locations because.
Is that what happened?
Because of the field. And so then it became.
Because of the field or because of the parking?
Oh, all, all of the above, all the above. And so it, it was.
It wasn't, it wasn't a quality experience.
You're throwing away money.
Then we need an angel.
Throwing away money.
But, and I believe that we have to give equality out there for people to appreciate.
We got about seven minutes.
That's why I say maybe it is a vote like Gary mentioned. Maybe it is an increase right across the board on everything, but it is a vote right up front to see, you know, is this what, is this what everybody wants? I would vote for it, but that doesn't mean you're gonna.
The, the, the options that you had at the end that included multiple, I think you had three different options, I believe, for.
Yeah. One, two, and three.
Let's, can we, can we just explore those again? I think those, those are what came out of the last task force meeting. Yeah.
In, in trying to respond to our visitors last night at the task force meeting from Bed and Breakfast, and we went back to look at using a combination of sales tax and motel tax. Option number one was to vote for a eight cent city sales tax that would sunset after ten years and then raise motel tax from four percent to two percent. That would generate three point three million dollars over ten years. Option number two was to bump it from an eighth cent to a quarter cent sales tax for five years, which kind of gives you the same amount of money. Option number three was to do the quarter cent sales tax for a ten-year period and then the motel tax instead of going to six would only go to five. And that would, over a ten-year period, generate five point six million dollars, which gets you very close to funding phase one, even if you didn't for some reason get the land and water conservation grant. If you got that, then you could even maybe.
Phase two. Can you go back to the area where you had the multiple funding sources and not the different phased?
Multiple funding.
Yeah, multiple funding sources. You had, you had everything but an angel in there.
I didn't know if you'd come forward or not.
We need a benefactor.
Going to need a benefactor on a deal like this.
That's recommendations. Here's one funding source. Here's the one where we talked about. Motel tax, of course, the grant, looking at some funds from the capital improvement sales tax we already have, but it's pretty highly committed. Look at additional sales tax, geo bond, looking applying to some foundations like Innisbuck Foundation and others. Those were some of the ideals that we explored.
Going back to the industrial park portion, you got what, twenty acres or twelve acres?
Twelve acres.
Okay, so if we, if you develop that, you would get a credit or something, you were saying?
If industry comes to your community.
So let me ask you a question. How come over the, and I've seen different plans from the city in the last six years I've been here. Different plans of, how come, how do we expect to get something on that acre when we haven't done anything for this eighty acres we have?
I can't answer.
To develop it.
I can't answer that question.
So we can't really rely on that million dollars?
Let me finish if you.
Okay, I apologize.
We can't give you an answer on that, but I can tell you we are working with an industry right now looking at that project. It's not a guarantee, but we do, we are working with somebody that's secure that project. One of the disadvantages that we have on economic development is twofold. We do not have any shovel-ready sites where you have sewer water. So, you know, you're looking at over a million dollars of getting the sewer water line extension and another three hundred thousand to get gas line. You have an industry come in and look at, well, there's ten acres or eighty acres and you're not shovel-ready and they're not going to type the answer, well, we'll have it there next year.
Now, they're going to Piedmont or Upland or somewhere else.
That's one of the disadvantages the city of Guthrie's had for a number of years. You can call it a non-industrial park all day if you want to, but unless it's shovel-ready, it's really not an industrial park. The other disadvantage that the city of Guthrie has is a lot of cities have a war chest or funds to use to provide incentives. And clearly with our financial situation, we don't have a fund to provide big incentives to recruit industry. So that puts us a little bit disadvantaged. So, so there's a lot of valid reasons why you haven't seen big successes in Guthrie as far as recruiting new industry. At least of this project, you would have a twelve acre site that is shovel-ready.
But let me, can I throw one thing in? Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, you got, got a minute.
I got one minute. So do you really think that since we've taken us so long to do a sales tax, so long? And I'm not confident, people, I know that we have, we're moving in the right direction and people are starting to see stuff, but I don't know that they're seeing everything they thought they were going to be seeing at this point yet. And do you think another one would even have a prayer of passing?
Especially if a sports park complex was promised in the first place.
And it was on the, well, that was on the list. You know, so, you know, I'm wondering, you know, what if we went in here and scratched some of them off? Where are we at? I think we're to a benefactor of some sort. And an increase in tax across the board or pulling from Robin Peter to pay Paul, taking from the CBB and pushing towards the sports complex. I think we need it, it's something that we're going to have to figure out, but we have other things coming too that we need and we got to figure out.
I, I don't think that you can go to a foundation or any grant program and look for them to do a hundred percent funding. You're going to have to have some funding that you're investing locally in order for them to consider providing funding.
That's why I was thinking of the in-kind side of it. What can we really do to break this six point six million down?
And I could say a little bit on that. I mean, there is, he shared, we haven't did any, even looked at any of that right now, Brian. But to go along with that, it all takes equipment, it all takes manpower. And when I'm, when I'm sitting there currently, nine open positions and have been since October.
Yeah, I know, it's a dilemma.
It's hard.
No question.
We got one, we got one minute.
Chris, I'll take thirty seconds. Obviously, everyone in this room wants a sports complex. That would be the ultimate deal. Everyone wants that. And I think it's up to our, our council members to go and talk to the constituents about what's the best way of doing it instead of maybe guessing. But, and I don't know what the, why the reason the hotels aren't getting people, but I think this sports complex would help bring that and increase that. I mean, that's a lot of people. And our, my, my goal for the complex is to have, like Mayor drove last night in the lights wrong. It's not to have nine or ten events throughout the year. July and August should be the peak time. Perry's not doing it right. It should be year-round. And that's, you know, it all comes down to funding. It's not going to happen overnight. Hopefully the Brian Brothroyd Foundation comes through, but you know, you got to be listening to, so.
We got executives.
If I could add one thing before we quit. Somehow as a community, there was so many different lists and so many things that were on the list, but it was partial funding, not a hundred percent funding. We've got to move past all the things that people thought they were promised when that tax was passed and get down to a real reality.
Avoid it.
This is what nineteen million dollars will do. It's not going to do sixty million dollars worth of project. And people got to look at the real numbers and say, hey, you know, nineteen million dollars, this is what we can reasonably expect. As the city spent that nineteen million dollars in a way that's had a positive impact on the community and get over that list. That's probably been one of the damnedest hardest things for me to deal with as a city manager the last two years is these eighteen different lists that I have of how we're supposed to spend that nineteen million dollars and all of them add up to more than nineteen million.
Oh, yeah, you should have seen it before you got there.
I would, I would submit that not too many members of our community would, would even estimate that a sports complex, sports complex would cost sixteen million dollars.
Yeah.
That's the reality of what, if you want to have quality things for our community and our kids. That's what it is. We're adjourned downstairs, folks.